Alright, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Palina. It is 4:5. We're gonna go ahead and get the meetings started. Ms. Carrie, you have some students who are flagging.
First of all, can you introduce yourself to everybody?
I'm Allison.
What's your last name?
McLean.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Thanks. What is your favorite thing in school?
Bots.
Are you ready?
Okay.
You have a rehearse? Ready? Begin.
Ready, begin.
Alright, Ms. Yumi, we have a forum just missing one individual tonight, and he still might come. Two point O, agenda additions, deletions, revisions, and agenda approval.
Madam Chairman, could we please have an additional agenda item to talk about leadership transition scheduling? Could it be about that?
And where do you want to add that?
Do we do it after the superintendent update?
So six point five? Or? Do you want to go for that?
No.
Six point five, okay, Ms. Tammy, you have six point five? For the leadership and transition mission scheduling. Does anybody have anything else?
Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Correct.
Yeah, we have a motion to amend the agenda by adding six point five on here, and we have a second. We have further discussion? No, let's vote. Scott?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes as well. So maybe you. Alright, and we will hand it over to Dr. Hoff for recognition.
Yes, invite the two men standing in the back, Ken Wood and Chris Mickey, representing Meta and the Primeville Data Center. If you guys want to come forward. You guys can take a seat at the unofficial.
Alright.
So about a month back, so Ken's been representing the Primeville Data Center now for a good year or so. And a month back, he mentioned he wanted an announcement to make for our school district. And we're gonna do it kind of right away, and they said, hey, what's your next board meeting? Looked at the calendar and said, oh, it's October. Why don't you do the October board meeting? And then I really looked at it and I said, just so you know, that's in Palina, an hour out of town. And Ken was such a good boy, he goes, oh, we want to come to Palina. So, and he brought a friend, Chris Mickey. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ken, just to talk about partnership and what's on the horizon.
Yeah, we just, huge thanks to you all for this opportunity. Joel, the whole team here, Creek County Schools, has been such an incredible partner to us over the, like, well, since, you know, 2010, we broke ground here in Primeville. So always been such a great partner for us, and we're so appreciative for the leadership and the staff and the support staff, principals, students, everyone who has really been so wonderful to us. So we are excited to announce that there will be a $25,000 grant to support Creek County Schools again for the CTE program and robotics programs from Meta. So I believe the unofficial announcement will go out tomorrow, but we was wanting to kind of make the announcement to you all today and share the good news and continue to have such a great working relationship with you all and all the great work you all are doing. So very, very appreciative for, again, for Joel's leadership and the whole staff, so.
It's amazing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I'll add some figures to that. I think with this, I'm kind of looking over again. Meta, the Primeville Data Center, at this point, I think is well over $2 million that they've contributed to the school district, and I don't know how much for the community. So such a strong partnership. Coincidentally, here in Meta, we have two students who have brought some Lego robotics. So to be able to see the real impact that those donations have had on providing our students just amazing opportunities that they wouldn't have otherwise is really important. And to have Ken and Chris saying, we want to come to Palina, I just thought that is so cool and show the partnership that we have.
A beautiful day and a beautiful drive.
Yes.
It's great, yeah.
Questions from the board?
Not a question, but a comment to you, Ken. There's been quite a bit in the last session of the legislature, which might have been a criticism of data center. Big power hog and something about it. There's a reporter, if you were going in, that just loves to run his monthly story on all the data centers. And, you know, as somebody who's been elected for a long time, served at multiple levels, I wondered, are data centers good for us in the months? And I want you to know that I see, as a citizen, the efforts that you make to mitigate your own impact, whether it be solar investments or trying to find water supplies or improve our water supplies, that the contributions you make, they are huge, they are impactful, the employment that you bring. My own position is that data centers are doing us more good than we are. And I want to thank you for enduring all the negatives about that from people who like community under glass. I think change is maybe good, and I think the change you're bringing effort for them. So thank you, Meta. We were told that.
We appreciate that. We appreciate you. This community has been such an incredible partner to us since we announced coming here. And I think that's what's made that all that possible. And to have such great sort of partners here on the ground, it's just, it means a lot to us. So thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Let's thank him again, and a tradition. You have to take the picture. And I'm actually gonna borrow this. You guys are okay? Can you guys stand through robots in the picture? Would that be okay?
Alright, yeah. Steal a picture here too, if I can.
Alright. Well, district, a talk. You're in the picture now. I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give them a round. Alright, next up, I'm actually inviting Carrie Bornbach, and she's gonna recognize a couple of Palina staff members.
You guys, welcome to Palina School. If you didn't get soup and bread, and cookies, make sure you do that before you go. We are so happy to have you out here. Today, I'm gonna take an opportunity to recognize two of our classified staff members. So when you are at a small school, nobody just gets to do one job. And that is really indicative of these two ladies. So they're both really gonna hate this all together. Jenny and Holly, I'll have you guys come up for your picture later, but you'll have to come up right now if you don't want to. So I'll read to you about what I wrote about Jenny. Jenny Ridley has worked in Palina for several years. She has served as our secretary, instructional assistant, and this year adding nutrition services when we learn pinch, and we really, really appreciate that. There is nothing that Jenny won't say yet to helping with around Palina. She loves the students, staffs, and families with her whole big heart. Jenny advocates for Palina School every day because she wants the students to have every opportunity that every other student gets. According to Jenny, work is her happy place. She is a problem solver and go-getter. So thank you, Jen, for that. Holly, Holly has also worked in Palina for several years. She has served several important roles for our schools. Holly is an instructional assistant, the librarian, takes care of technology and assessment, and does a bit of coaching around the track and, you know, volleyball and football, all those kinds of things for our kids. We appreciate Holly, your quiet and your persistent ways. She makes us laugh, holds the students to high standards. She works hard to be trained on all the curriculum and coordinates within town staff to get our students the support that they need every day. Thank you, Jenny and Holly, for making Palina School the very best place it can be. Now, if I would have told them that they were doing this, they might not have shown out, so. Next up, we have our students. I'm gonna have Ms. Mindy Nelson, who's our head teacher out here in Palina. He's gonna introduce our two students, and they are then gonna tell you a little bit about their project that they have in front of them, like Lego bots. Yes.
You can have the students at the table, guess what, robots.
Alright, whenever we, so, first of all, introduce. So this is Maverick Rossi. He is a sixth grader. They get all kind of, you know, when you have five grades in your class, you're like, oh, just double checking. And then this is Liam Hickerson, and he's one of our seventh grade students. And they get so excited anytime we can learn anything that has to do with robotics or spirals or technology. They just kind of soak it up. So it's been a great privilege to be able to have some of the tools that they have in town out here in Palina. So they get to experience some of this, and I'm gonna let them go ahead and start talking because they're much more fascinating than I am.
Hello, my name is Lynn Hickerson, and I'm the seventh grader in Palina School.
My name is Maverick Rossi, and I am a sixth grade student in Palina School.
Today, we will be showing you our battle bots, and to dive in deeper, Maverick, sorry, will entail you all of the things to know about it to make sure that you have a fair fight.
Battle Bots are a battery-powered Lego set that includes motors and sensors. Once we build the robot and attach the wheels, motors, and battery, we can engage in battle. To battle, we put the balloons on our bots, and then we charge at each other. And now that you know the basics, I'll tell you about my design. My bot design is based off of a helicopter propeller for the weapon. Because I thought it could chop the balloons and pop them, so I could easily win. I also added a adjustable propeller, so I could get the balloons that are higher and shorter, just to make it easier for me to win. I also added a trailer for my offense. This is so when the balloon is getting, well, trying to be poked, I am far enough away so I do not get poked.
My design is inspired by a tractor and a drill mechanic. The reason I chose the tractor is because I like how it has a, has big wheels and a sturdy body, and how it has great suspension in some parts. And then what I liked about the drill is how it has the pointy end, and that's where I got the point where I put the tack to pop balloons. I also made a thin, narrow, and long, long-ish body for maneuverability and mobility.
That end.
Do you want him?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you guys want to come around and?
Do they want to go in bigger section? I think they're alright there. So the whole class is doing another last, I believe, doing, beating against each other. Again? Do you guys have any questions first? Lynn? Or Maverick?
I have a question for Mindy.
Oh, okay, yes.
How much of an expert do you have become in robotics, or do you teach us?
You know, I think it's fascinating that I'm not an expert in it, because I feel like they explore a lot more because I'm not directly telling them what to do. And so I used to work in the tech department, and I would help with spiro, things like that, so I have a background in it. But really letting them figure out what works and what doesn't, and why, is, I think, where the real learning happens. So me not being an expert probably helps them.
So what we do, what is the strategy? Here's a bot to do something with this?
Well, usually there's some criteria, so sometimes, it depends what we're learning. So this one, it had to be, you could have a limited amount of pins. You have to have a balloon nail be the same size, and then they kind of go from there. So I give them a list of criteria, then they have to make it happen within that.
That has got to be the best part of your. Much more interesting than the division.
How long did it take you to build each of you? How long did it take you to build your?
Me, a day and a half.
Well, go through all the failures and success, and it takes something to be like a baby.
And have you proven that that model works best for you then?
Well, except for tonight. Before it's tonight. No, no.
Have you ever seen the show Battle Bots?
Yes.
Because that is a pretty famous design, the spinning one. It's pretty effective. I liked it.
It's okay, though. Little tweak on it.
Any other questions from the board? Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Is that all for you, Dr. Hoff? Okay. Approval of the consent agenda four point O.
Madam Chairman, this is a comment from Madam Center Gen. That we noticed four, six, two, we are hiring Alec Khan, recent graduate of Creek County High School. And I just wanted to comment how wonderful it is to see us bring our own back. Alec thinks he wants to do other things, so that's a cool hire, and I wanted to know the repairment of long-term teacher, Kimberly Cropcheck, four point eight one. I don't know how many years she's been a teacher, but it's a very long time. I actually went to high school, kindergarten, all the way through senior year, so she's been in my school career for a long time. Yes. So she will be missed.
Yeah, and she'll be here. She's finishing out here, like we've done before, we'll bring all our retirees at the, probably June, just to recognize. I think the rocking chairs are going away, but we'll make sure to do something, something special.
Very nice.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve this.
One second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second, do we have further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Kelsey? Yes. Scott?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And yes as well. Tammy, thank you all. Okay, we're gonna move to finance report. And final point, why? When I get to page the finance report. This is our first projection for the current fiscal year, so I'm pleased to present this to you. Less pleased about what the numbers actually say, but things could get better than these could get worse. So some of the major factors in our general fund this year that are impacting these numbers. Our enrollment is very close to budget. We're about eight square meters below budget, so that's a good thing. We enrollment drives your state school fund, so having that enrollment group pretty close to term is good. However, the state school fund may decrease just because of just straight budget cuts, so that's something you gotta watch. And then for thorough force fees for line seven, we still haven't received anything from last year, and I have no idea what's gonna happen for this year, but now that is zero right now. So that's something that could get better as time goes on. But I just love to be like right now. On the expenditures, we're projecting us to be very close to budget as of now. If you look at lines eleven, twelve, and thirteen, eleven and twelve go together. Salaries and wages is line eleven, and all of the related classes, annual taxes and benefits are like twelve. We've kind of had a flip-flop there. As you know, we've had to contract out some positions for speech, I'm with pathologist and school psychologist. So we'll probably have the over budgeting services and that, but that budget out of supplies, sorry, salaries and wages. The most, the most significant expenditure variance that we're looking at right now is line sixteen and other expenditures and other expenses because of our liability and liability and property insurance, and this is something I brought up before, that not only did our rates go up way more than budgeted, our carrier, our entrance carrier significantly reduced our coverage for the acronym SAM, Central Bus and Mall Station. And so we ended up buying additional policy to get us back up to the coverage levels that we needed. Close to 100,000, we're over 100,000 in budget, so. So that's what you see there on line sixteen. One thing I haven't noted anywhere on here is that we will be receiving $756,000 from ODB. It's a one-time compensation for an error that happened in three years with force fees. So in the year, I believe it was seventeen, 2017, 2018, the rules changed. It used to be that force fees were deducted from state school fund as a local revenue. And then those rules changed, and OD didn't realize it, and so for three years, they withheld the force fee amount from our state school fund. And so they notified us once they figured it out, and they corrected it going forward, and then they went through a legislative process to allocate funds so that they wouldn't have to go back to the other districts and take a money from them in order to make it right here in the school districts that do force. So three years' worth is that $756,000. I haven't shown it on here because I'm hoping that we would be planning for that money to go in the general fund and right back out to something, because it's not something that we can rely on here to hear, and it's something that we should do, we should do something important with that money. But that should be coming in any day now. But for the property taxes, I still don't have property tax assessment or taxation info as of today. So as I get that, I'll keep you updated. Another thing I want to note is on the ending fund balance section, I did a little bit of restructure on presenting that. So at the bottom of page three, it says fund balances and reserves. So in line twenty-three, I entered the amount that we should aim for to have at the end of the year. And then anything above and beyond that is in the line below, which right now is negative. In all the years past, those have flipped, and it was just, I think it was just confusing. But the bottom, the total of the fund balance in the twenty-nine is the one that is the actual projected fund balance at the end of the year. So if you want any more information about that, and we get a little dirty in this conversation, just get on the call. But that, I think, will be a little bit better for people to understand as we go. So then I want to show you on page eight. This is our summary of reserve designations. So as we closed out twenty-four, twenty-five last fiscal year, some of the surplus general fund balance from that year was moved into some of these spots. So some of the specific things I want to call out is the PERS reserve. As we, since we have a board role to reduce our future PERS rates, one of the strategies would be to continue to build up that PERS reserve so that we get an opportunity to prepay some of our first costs. That can really reduce our first cost going down the road and keep us from having to reduce positions or reduce services or something like that. So that's, I just wanted to show you that that went up in the twenty-four, twenty-five, that blue box there. And then I am also in the insurance reserve, line two ninety-seven, we also put a little bit of money now just to kind of gradually prepare, because it seems like coverage keeps declining and premiums keep increasing. So one last thing. On the statistics page, on page nine, this is the only month that you'll see in the call twenty-two, these numbers matching the enrollment report was in the consent agenda. Because these numbers will stay as our October first numbers all throughout the year. So even though the enrollment report in the consent agenda will change month to month, this report always looks at October first numbers for every year. And then again, down at the bottom, there's a highlighted yellow section where I just don't have the information yet for the property taxes, the per thousand for the loan debt. That is everything I have on financial reports. Maybe you have any questions? Do we have any options as far as insurance? Nothing less expensive than this. We're in a it's kind of an insurance co-op. And it's just for education, so it's not a for-profit business, so that's why it's the least expensive option for us. It's the reinsurers that are causing them rates to go up.
And that AMW, the green at the bottom, is that projected based on just a flat level of funding, or you build in an assumption about increasing profitable revenue?
The AMW is based on the enrollment projections that I did. And then the state school fund grant for student, I don't have the projection.
Do you just use the flat, the current flat number?
Yes.
And then there was a lot of discussion last week at the state level on the governor and co-chairs about the fact that they have to cut 950 million out of the state budget in the twenty-sixth session, and that's before they address the staff and medication people they anticipate definitely address them. Have you heard anything, either you or from your professional circles, about whether they're contemplating a school fund cut?
Somewhere
One slide I saw said one percent, so I think like everything right now, it's kind of in flux.
It could could have a cut to the general fund, price of price of success into SIA.
But they would take that in the second half of the bi-AM, so it'd be two percent of the bi-AM, or two percent out of the second year?
There are discussions that it could happen this year. And that's why I said in the That's why I said in the.
Once you block them on your hiring. Key cost drivers then.
Right, it's not ideal.
That's the nice way to say it.
We're, we're watching it really closely, uh, like I mentioned, uh, when we do have those one-time funds, making sure that we're being. They're recruiting with them, putting them in reserve so that if that happens, we don't have a sizable issue. So we're watching very closely.
And then how big is anticipated purse hold next year? But we've got another year of adjustments to deal with that.
So that purse rate will be, purse rates for next year will be the same as this year. So it's basically. Once we make those cuts, it's a small amount of. Decrease for next year, it's just basically. Whatever your inflation would be, would be your, you know, be easy to cut for next year. Over the top of this year.
But we have to roll some more money into. Purse next year. More than you have to do this year. Right?
Roll it to the purse reserve or?
No, into just paying the first cost. Or first debt. Is it just the inflationary adjustment? Is that all we have opinions here or?
For purse, it should be the same as this year, not the first bonds, that would be the following year.
Right.
And so the next by E M, that's. That's where we have some, a lot of them, because the first bond's dropped off, so we don't have to pay that debt anymore. Then your, the rates increase and you don't know if they will be equal. You know, an equal increase to your rates as what grabbed off of your debt, or is there will be some gap there?
Well, also with the high market returns, it's certainly purpose back, but until you know. That you should be able to lower your U A L a little bit. Uh, or a lot of it.
Yes.
But I don't know how that'll play out over here.
Right. And it'll be based off this stuff, this December's. U A L. Announces. For the following might, so we'll have a year gap, so whatever happens this year is how it's set.
On the market is high, the September first for great.
Right. Trying to think if that's right or if it's the following, so. Might be the.
Well, if they're gonna calculate rates just on this December.
They've calculated.
You end up wanting to burn.
With this, be this year, they calculate the five months rates. Always behind. That's what she's looking for. Anything else on five point one? Okay, uh, five point two, we're going to stick with Hannah and Bree.
Hello.
How about for the major board in the packet that talks about all of the different. Supports being on place for students happening, what to be all. And I want to just. Reiterate, um, this is similar to the report that I gave you last month that was, um, related to special education funding in that. It's just for informational purposes. We're not suggesting any changes. Um, but at the work session, there were some questions about what are we doing for students navigating poverty, and so. We knew that we could provide some education to help the board, um, just understand, and, um, it actually helps us too to compile all this together. And again, I will plan to continue periodic reports on various topics. So. The report in the packet compiles everything we could think of that we know is a. Official program that we have. But we also know. There are. Things going on throughout the schools that we don't even know about because staff. Just help students and they don't necessarily. Ask for recognition, need recognition, they just take care of us, and so those things aren't anywhere. But what we do. What we do know about is listed here. And so Bree is actually one. She oversees a lot of those programs and she's been a school senior, so she's been explaining a lot of these programs.
Um, so if you go into the next slide, so. What I wanted to do was match these services to what the student needs are, so you see where that impact is happening, so last year. About four percent of our students were identified as homeless. Um, and we have a homeless liaison, as you saw in that report. That is able to work directly with making sure these students are staying enrolled in their schools, are getting transportation. And are getting expedite services to if they were, you know, in need of a five oh four or an I E P. Um, so we have a person that's dedicated to doing that work and that's where the student need was for that. Um, and then. We have about fifty percent of our students that are labeled as economically disadvantaged. Um, and so the main support for those students is through F A M, the Family Access Network. Um, and we have two positions that support that, one that serves mostly the elementary students and then one that serves secondary students. So at Crooked River and at Kirk County Middle School. There are spaces where these, these, uh, two ladies have wonderful materials for students, they're able to buy brand new clothes. Uh, and things that students need, so that served over a thousand students last year, um, which was about thirty-three percent, so when you look at fifty percent economically disadvantaged, thirty percent getting served. Um, that makes me feel pretty good, but also identifies a little bit of a cap there that we want to make sure that. Um, this is being well communicated with families and students so they know it's available to them. And then you can see that, uh, as Anna mentioned, that our supports go beyond just F A M though, like we get donations, we get grants. Um, we make sure that there's. Reduced funding for athletic participation. You know, uh, there's a scholarship for the driver's ed program at the high school. We want to remove any and all barriers that students are facing to, um, getting the best education they possibly can from Kirk County. Um, so our goal at the end of the day is always to remove barriers. And get students access to high-quality education and connected into sports and clubs and anything of their interests. Um, you can go to the next slide, so since this is a board role, I wanted to be really clear on. What are the steps we're taking? What are we doing? Um, so the first thing is that in the fall, we make sure that all of our staff is trained on identifying. Students who would qualify for McKinney-Vento, so that's the federal law that ensures educational rights and stability for students facing homelessness. And the reason it's important to make sure our staff are really in tune to this, um, law is that the definition of homeless. Can be, uh, easily misinterpreted, so, um, it might include just insufficient housing, it might include. Living in a trailer, it might include, oh, this kid told me that they're living with. Their cousins and their cousin's friends, and that, that qualifies them for McKinney-Vento, so we want to be really clear with staff. What that means and make sure that they're ready to identify it when they hear a student talking about it. Uh, and then beyond that, making sure that they're aware of F A M, they know all the forms to fill out. Um, the F A M access, the, the F A M network is really amazing because all you have to do is call or email. Brenda or Vanessa, and they're gonna get kids access to whatever they need that day, they're really quick and they're, they're very responsive. Um, so making sure that our staff is fully aware of this is our first step. The next is, uh, that we partner as a team so that F A M and, um. Our homeless liaison and our foster care point of contact, that those three or four individuals are all coming together and meeting. Um, and knowing what's going on, so that way we're not, we're, we're filling in any holes, so. Like an example of this is when a student gets placed in, in foster care, we want to give them a brand new teddy bear. And make sure that they're feeling supported, we want to make sure that. That, that all these students are getting the, the supports they need and that we're tracking that in a systematic way. That's identifying any, you know, holes in our services. Um, and then we want to communicate this to families and students early and often, so we highlighted this in one of our first newsletters that we sent out to all families. Um, it's posted on our website, and then we just want to be continuously looking at the school level and teacher level to get this information into the hands of the people that need it most. And then the next one, the meeting the unique needs. This one, I think if you've spent like, you know, any time, if you've toured Pioneer, you've seen. That there's a wide range of services there for students. But also it's how do we connect students to college and career, and sometimes we find that a barrier to that is not having a birth certificate or a social security card. So we are wanting to make sure that we have that our counselors and administrators are, are doing a really awesome job, I feel, of getting kids what they need to get connected to jobs. And, and finding whatever unique barriers they face and saying, okay, let's resolve them. And then last is collaboration, this doesn't happen in isolation, this happens, happens with partnerships with families, so when. One of our fan advocates gets the call from the high school saying, hey, I've got a kid here that needs a backpack. They're gonna deliver that backpack by the end of the day, but they're also gonna call that family and say, hey. We connected your student to a backpack today. Also, you know, we gave him a coat and what else does your family need, and then trying to get them any other supports that they might need because. Um, that F A M network can do a lot for our families, so we want to make sure they know and make sure that we're creating. Relationships with our families in need. Not just assuming like, oh, okay, they've got the backpack, they're good now, right? It's much more than that, and we want to have that personal touch with all of our families. So the last thing that, as Anna and I were doing this together, we were like. First of all, I just wanted to, you know, this is a, a public board meeting, so we want to make sure that people know that. We do accept donations, if you've been to some of the schools, you've seen that, that we have things on hand, and so if you ever have generally used items, if you're listening to this. Um, you can bring them to the school, you bring them to me and I will find a home for them and we'll make sure they get put to good use. Um, but with that, I also just want to. To thank all of the people that make that happen in our community, because. You know, Pioneer is my example of it because I've spent a lot of time there, but many of our schools have food pantries. Have clothes that are available to students, and that happens because of a connected community that we have, and we want to continue. Building those relationships and making sure that, um, people see our schools as a place that serves students. No matter what their need is. Um, so thank you for all that you do to make that happen for kids, and we pass it back to Anna.
So the key points that I just want to make sure that we took away from this is that, as, as an educational institution. We do provide a lot of social services, and the other thing is there are a lot of various sources of funds. And uses of funds, there's just a lot of things there to see.
I think what I really love about this is. With Anna, to your point, with just so much disparate funding and all this, the fact that you guys are able to coordinate this in a way that makes sense is. Real credit to the team and. Back to the tour pioneer the other day, it was, it was totally a joy. To see it and. I've not talked to a teacher or counselor who does not stop their own snacks in their. Foster, like, so. A lot of good kiddos.
And can you talk to somebody about the poverty weighting in, in W R? Poverty weighting factor.
Well, it's got a thing for you.
So with one manager explained, there, there's a portion of the A D N, yeah, little portion. That is based on students in poverty, I'll tell you why that matters, just talk about that.
For the state school fund. We received one. Credit, one A D M, the A student, but then. We also received additional A D M, there is a number that's called students in poverty. And that number comes from, it doesn't come from the number of students in our schools that are. Identified as economically disadvantaged, it's, it comes from the number of children in our county that are identified as. And we can dispatch. But is that you, what you?
So it's, it's a dedicated funding sits there that's called, that's derived based on numbers of children in poverty, it's a theory that it costs a little more to educate that group. But I had the privilege, something before COVID. Of sitting on the statewide task force that the legislature convened that wanted to talk about that funding, and to talk about. Bringing it in and segregating it from the state school fund and using it only to address the needs of our children who are in poverty. Which sounded like a really cool idea at a time we had a lot more money than we do now, because we're not gonna have the children. It was a mess. In what, there were twenty-five people there, O S B A was there, O S, uh, O S E A, everybody is there, O E A. And what became obvious in that conversation was that that money is so entwined with delivering services. And the basic educational product, that if you tried to detangle that, you would destabilize the entire system. And that wasn't going to be a revenue that we would be able to deal with. Children who are in poverty and provide more resources, if we wanted to do that, we had to add more revenue and that proposal never went. So that brings me back to your point earlier about the vital importance of having community support. That comes in to do this work that cannot and will never be able to do through the A D N W. The. Issue there is that. Well, occasionally we get serendipitous gifts, which we love. A lot of them don't know that we can get that, a lot of people don't know what we want, and the best practices of fundraising are you telling them exactly what you want? You tell them over and over exactly what you want, whether that be money or that be goods. And then magically it starts to appear, if you, you wish that they knew what you wanted, it probably won't happen. So to the degree that we work our communications, which apparently now you're our communications director, that's a team. I mean, and we say, don't say, you know. Food helps, you say jars of peanut butter help. You know, jars of fifty more soup help, that growing cheese helps, what, whatever it is that you're asking for, I'm putting that out on Facebook. Or I need five thousand dollars to support kids in buying eyeglasses. Or what, whatever it is you need, but the more specific you are, the more likely you are to get, with long history on that. Not coming out of the state school fund, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That was why I asked you the question.
What's the threshold for the technically disadvantaged?
So we get that from direct certifications from the state, actually, so it, it's a number of different things that can qualify a student with that threshold.
Okay, we don't, we don't know like exactly what is that, we can look it up.
Like SNAP benefits or?
They qualify for other state programs that have the. Uh, food stamps. We, there's an information sharing that we have with the state so that they, their family is connected to those programs. And so the benefits from those programs, that's, that goes to our. Data as economically disadvantaged, because we no longer collect for renewed applications because we have released whatever.
And they don't have to, like, I, I paired that with the F A M conversation, but they don't have to qualify. As economically disadvantaged to receive supports from F A M, it's any student in need, F A M is able to serve.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Um, five point three, enrollment projections, Miss Anna.
I'm done for this time. Every year I present enrollment projections for ten years into the future, and this year it's a little bit more complicated because we have the addition of the two large apartment complexes in Primeville. Because I started digging into this, I, I realized the locations of those two, um, apartment complexes, it happens that one of those is in the Barnesview Elementary. Um, attendance zone. And one of them has to be in Crooked River attendance zone, so that's actually, I was hopeful to know that. Both of them are going into one school. Because then you might be, you might be needing to redraw boundaries or do something to fight. So I kind of gave you a bunch of information that I want to over here, it's all in your packet regarding. How many students are there usually in an apartment complex and, um, how many apartments and things like that? I took all that information, if you can go to the next one, and put, I. How would you get with my hair?
Different, that's the most one.
Different color on here than there, I'm worried about that, uh, that's a change and I'm pleased with it. So one thing to know is that elementary enrollment has been growing at seven.
I count you.
Seven, seven percent, okay. So. That's on top of. This addition of potentially, you know, the, the new apartments, we don't know if. We don't know who will live in these funds, so we don't know if it's going to be. Bunch of new people from, who didn't live in Primeville before and you're bringing students with them, or if it's going to be all people from within Primeville. Um, or if it will be all people from within Primeville who don't have any students, so we really don't know, so you have to just make these guesses. Based on national averages, and then the one thing we do have is, um, we have another apartment complex, so I looked at that one. Just to see how many of our students have that. Address, and so that kind of gave us an idea of. And that was, I think it was thirty-nine percent of the, we take the number of units and the number of students, it was thirty-nine percent, which is higher than the national average. Um, so I took that percentage, which is already a little higher than it might. End up being. But I took. And I kind of put it in this graph and I have this, uh, trend. See what this says. But this.
Recording in progress.
Yellow line here is the one where I took the, um. The enrollment that we currently have. And then added in what the historical enrollment is over the past five years. Because prior to that, there were a lot of weird fluctuations in enrollments, I just wanted to exclude those anomalies. Um, and so I took that information and then overlaid the apartment. Um, the potential. Increase from the apartments, and then that is that yellow line, so. For elementary. That line. It's, in my notes, it says it's. it's, in my notes, it says it's actually yellow. It shows that we're going to meet our capacity in about three years. I know. But again, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of assumptions in here, but that is a little bit scary. Can you go to the next slide? Middle school graph shows that we're going to meet capacity under that assumption in about five years. And then go to the high school one, the high school graph shows that we're going to meet capacity. Kind of, it's going to kind of fluctuate, and then drops, it's going to drop, and then about three to four years, hit that capacity. Now Pioneer, Pioneer is a little bit different because it's a little bit intertwined with high school, and it'll it'll kind of manage its own enrollment, just because its own certain students will want to, or fit that model. So, but I did give you that graph in your packet. So, overall, these graphs, they look a little bit alarming. But I think we shouldn't panic. What I think we should do, rather than panic, is we are going into long-range facilities and planning soon. We take this information, overlay that with building assessments, and consider all this information together, and as the year goes on, we know more, because one of those apartment complexes has actually had some delays and may not even be ready by next year. So, we just, we really don't know. So I think what we do is take all this information, know that any one of these scenario, or any infinite number of possibilities would happen. But, but know that those, those lines on the top there are the certainty.
I think this is helpful too, because as things start to play out, and we have, you know, the algorithms or formulas that we're using, we can start to kind of scenario planning of like, okay, well, this didn't play out like we thought. Oh, that's going to trend. So I appreciate the work.
Anna, do we know when the one that is continuing to build right now, do we know when they're going to start working that?
We're going to start.
Spring? And the other one is? Okay, I don't.
Less predicted.
There's not very much. But the other one's probably definitely spring.
Yeah, the one that's right back at the river is, if you drive by there, it's vertical.
They're sudden.
So my recollection is that in the late nineties, Stacy, you would have been the only one here.
Wow.
We were running the high school close to twelve hundred. That, remember the old A B split lunch and what a giant mess that was, but we were managing to run it. It's very tight, wasn't enjoyable, but it worked. We were able to do it. So, and I see you've got vastly set at nine hundred there, which is a lot more comfortable. But is there a way maybe we could put a bar in here that shows, you know, not so much comfortable capacity, but maybe you can squeeze one more in? Where's that gap at each one of our schools?
And it used to be, years ago when I started doing these enrollment projections, we did have this number higher, and then there was some what you call research, or got going and actually looking at the high school, and I don't know much changed, but it was determined that that was not the same as it used to be, so we could run a evaluation as well. See what's different.
It is like rats living on top of each other, it's terrible, but.
Not currently.
No, no, back when it had the twelve.
Didn't have seven C T programs in the nineties.
Yeah, a lot of teachers on cards, with multiple people, so.
And big classes.
Nine hundred is comfortable capacity, but I think, yeah, a thousand is people are probably yelling at us.
Okay, I was gonna say the early nineties was comfortable.
But the best thing I heard Anna say was in quotes, she said, you know, this data should make us raise our eyebrows, but not. So it's definitely teller points is, okay, let's definitely keep an eye on this, but it's not final on fire at this point, and going through our natural processes of long-range facilities, I think we'll get that really.
Well, and there's another part of this, which is to remember that we went through this before the enrollment panic, that's when Steve Swisher was here as superintendent. And Steve built his budgets based on enrollment assumptions that looked like this. Steve lost his job because those didn't materialize. He was relying on the demographics of Florida State University, and I'm not blaming him, but I am saying you've got to be really careful how you pick that, because if you rely on the money piece of this side, that could work out really bad.
We start budgeting like we're going to be up here, going to get us all in trouble, so.
Thanks, Anna, appreciate that you sold this.
You got no money, we got too many kids.
That gives more, more fun income, strong soul.
Okay, well, with that, we're going to move on to the superintendent report.
Start off with a report on building bridges. So remember back in July, we had three main buckets, and we started calling it the blue bucket, was building bridges, and this is all about the partnerships with our community as well as also we kind of grouped in how we're communicating. When that's the goal, the board set around ten goals around this. About half of them were around community collaboration and partnerships. And the other half were around improved communication and stakeholder engagement. So, rather than reporting back on all the board goals at one time, we made a lot of progress on this one, so we thought it'd be good to give, give the board an update. And that saves grief from a two-hour board presentation in January. So, if, if we can rewind back to January, or probably since February, since I took over, building bridges was hands down one priority. If you sat in the meetings that some of us were in, you realized that we, we had to find a way to get our, moving back behind us. So that's where, where building bridges came about. The first goal that the board talked about was two point one, standardizing school-to-home communication. We've made tremendous progress on this, and a lot of credit to our admin team. So weekly, we've talked about this, principals are sending a note to families and staff, as well as at least two social media posts. Big credit to Marcus Hayes, he's not a social media person, but he is good to the likes these days, so, big shout out to Marcus Hayes. We've also done schools reviewing a school newsletter, every school, a district newsletter goes out, you might get a text for it, as well as there's now a write a column for the Central Oregonians. So, that goes out to the whole community, and as well as we're exploring, we added, I think, grade five, so those parents can now access the student gradebook through parent view, as well as we're giving an update on how we're communicating on our conferences here. So, just for our newer board members, we do a green-yellow-red spotlight system, and I try to be as honest as possible. So that's a legitimate green on, on that, and we're making really good progress. Family and staff steering committees, this was another board goal. So we have started our family staff, or sorry, our family steering committee, we had it about three weeks ago. So we had eleven moms show up, we had an awesome discussion, we went through vision values. They shared a lot of things that were going well, and a couple of things that we can improve, that we've already been able to make progress on. Our staff steering committee is, I think in the next two weeks. So, I think we've got thirteen staff assigned to that, just to get staff voice and, and tell us what's going on. Two point three, student engagement and feedback plan. Mr. Cooper, you'd be proud, we're going to listen to our students. So in front of you, this is something three-led. Every principal, it's an additional handout that is on your table. Each school identified ways this year that they're going to seek out student inputs, whether that's surveys, listening sessions, talking to leadership. So, the reason that's yellow and not green is we just set this a month ago and haven't had a chance to do it, but we're making good headway on goal two points three. Two point four, we are green, and I have to give credit to, I think, Kelsey, you said, hey, our parent surveys are showing that families really want communication around sped, as well as what we're doing for bullying. So, credit to Grant Hayball, who sent out a, a letter to all families with students on I E Ps. And so we'll do that fall, winter, and spring, so they all, all got that. And then we're also creating a website specifically for our sped families, that has kind of key information, key contacts, what to do. So that will really target that communication to families that we heard weren't, weren't feeling like they were getting information. And then our C C Way initiative, so that's our anti-bullying information. So, we're starting to push that, October's actually anti-bullying month, so we're starting to see some direct communication on those key things. Two point five, community communication groups. This is actually really cool. So Eric Ryan was able to make some progress on this. So, hot news tonight, we are launching three groups that anyone in the community can listen to, so, or listen to, you can subscribe to. So one will be general district updates. People can go to our website, sign up, and they'll get the monthly newsletter, even if they don't have students involved. So that'll be one group. Two, athletic updates. Mr. Bonner and Ms. Proctor have a weekly schedule they send out. So anyone that subscribes to that, we're going to have them get that weekly information so they can stay on in tune with what's going on with our sports. And then finally, C T E updates. A lot of our community is really interested in what are you guys doing for the trade? So, Mr. Ryan Cockburn does a monthly update, and anyone who subscribes to that will get that email. So, we'll have those on our websites. We'll start advertising those through social media, and anyone in the community that wants to hear about all the great things we're doing, can sign up there. Big shout out to Eric Ryan, you get that going for us. And then finally, two point six, stakeholder feedback on policies. This is something that we've actually been doing for the last year. Whenever we have a new policy that's coming to the board, it's really, really hard to get that on our website, and the community can review that, give feedbacks, and then we can share that. So, a lot of greens on this one, a lot, a lot of positive progress. So if we look at the second part of building bridges, community collaborations and partnerships. So, two point seven, collaboration with local businesses and community foundations. And to give us a green on this one. So, we first ever parental partnership lunch, a couple of years ago to make that. We hosted that, and we were at around a hundred and thirty community members attend. We've had a lot of people, businesses reach out on internships, so that was a great way to start relaunching our partnerships with the community. Some of you saw this news story, Mr. Huffman was able to partner with the band of brothers to welcome them in the school on Constitution Day. Picture's small, but you can see they welcomed our students in, such a, such a cool event. Additionally, we have a new contract, Anna's been working hard with the Hur County Foundation. We're partnering with them on some additionally, we need some print shop help, so we're working with them off of that foundation, as well as I have quarterly check-ins when cars taken on that position, so we check in regularly. Thanks to Eric Osborne, we have a new partnership with the Heart of Oregon, that'll serve about three to five students that are at risk and want to get some job skills. And then thanks to Kevin Bradley, a new partnership around with C O I C, and we're getting a partner for three around getting students their wildland firefighting fond. So, green there. All right, I got it written. And sometimes you got to give yourself a red just to show you'll do it. So, visible presence two point was the, the district having visible presence at community events. We haven't been able to get too much traction on this, but we have some upcoming ideas that we think will, will get us at least out of red into yellow. So, a number of us did it at the booster club event, we're always at all the athletic games. What we have planned is, I think half of Primeville comes out on Saturdays for soccer, so we might have an informational table in the next two weeks, just post up in front of the high school, some donuts, I think we've talked about, and be able to just give out information to families. So, that's one of our plans. And then we've also talked about what it would take to get a booth of affair. So, paying a couple staff members just to have an informational booth. So, that's the plan. My goal is to have that one to yellow by the next time it goes in on this. Two point nine, it's yellow, but I'm actually pretty optimistic on this one. Mr. Huffman, the high school, they sent out a newsletter, or an information newsletter, but also what, what was really cool was they had a forum, or sorry, a forum that parents would sign saying, yes, I'm coming to conferences. No, I'm not coming to conferences because I checked my grades, my students' grades online, or no, I don't like you, I'm not coming, exactly that. But, so that way we can collect data, because certainly our high school is where we're seeing the lowest conference participation numbers. And one of our theories is it's because parents want, hey, I know my kid's great, I've fed him a long time. So that way we'll be able to have some data that we run. See some progress there. In addition, the high school counselors are offering two sessions to try to give some additional information for parents. Additional reason to show up. So one is for C C H sophomores and junior students and their parents, with some targeted information there. And then we'll have a second session that's open to freshmen and inviting freshmen. So trying to couple conferences with some additional reasons for parents to attend. So, some, some good work there. And then finally, volunteers, two point one, we're going green on that one. We've incremented my check this morning, and we're at fifteen hundred people have filled out the paperwork to be volunteers to chaperone field trip and whatnot. So, we're trending ahead of where we've been before, and I think a lot of that is to do with our building bridges and whatnot. Hey, there's ten board goals, about seven minutes. So, making some really good progress, really proud of the team and the work we've done. I know this was a big party for the board to to get the community back behind us, and I think we're making some good, good leeway. Any questions on building bridges?
First of all, I love all of that, I'm really excited. But for the communication groups that you just launched, that we put, what Scott was talking about, like the wish list of what people what we want out there, and even like, I like some volunteer
Yeah.
About that. And then secondly, for Saturday soccer, I'm just curious if, like, tracksuits are going to be involved?
You know, if I know one of our board members in the Golden Tigers, I think he is the team's name, that we might, we might have to have a cameo on.
So, we might have a poster at the soccer thing that says, you don't have a bathroom because you didn't vote for the bond.
All right, any other questions?
And I do wonder if we could track as part of this, our engagement with the broader education community. We talked about needing to restore our reputation as a growing performing school with N O S B A, and P S D, and places where other districts are, and when the board can help with some of that by participating in those events.
Yeah. We'll be reporting on that. All right. Thank you. This is more of a team thing, so.
Yes, it is. Okay, now we're going to hop over to Ms. Bree again. Six point two for the Division Twenty-two report.
Good evening. So this is my annual O D E required report on Division Twenty-two standards. So just to give you a bit of context about what this is. So this is, again, required by O D E to present to the board and then make available on our website by November first. And every year, we go through our compliance with over fifty rules with the state. And that's what Division Twenty-two is. So it's a checkpoint on last year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But it also, it's, it's nice that it's in the fall, because it gives us the opportunity to say, hey, what's going, you know, where, you know, where are we at on these things? I meet with principals, I meet with directors about their standards that are directly tied to their departments. So it's a good checkpoint for us that helps us. Joel and I don't like to have surprises, so when we do Division Twenty-two standards, we, we get to find out where there's any surprises, and I'm excited for this report to you guys tonight. So, these are the areas that Division Twenty-two falls into. So high-quality learning experiences, that there's one around personal finance and careers and implementing that requirement. The next area is educational systems, so that's things like instructional minutes, making sure that we're meeting those at every grade level. Engage partners, ensuring that our certain information is being posted to our website, things like that. Safe schools, working with Leland to make sure our emergency protocols and things like that are all up to date. And then staff, working with Joe on our evaluation processes, and things like that. So that's kind of a just a small variety of what's in the Division Twenty-two standards. If you go to the next slide, in terms of our compliance this year, we're looking pretty good, and I want to give a huge shout out and thank you to Carrie Lohmback, because she was able to set me up in this role with really, really great work. So, you know, she worked very hard last year on making sure that that graduation policy was up to date. She's been very diligent in documenting her, her notes on these things, and, and I felt like I wasn't handed some kind of mess, I was handed a very clean process. So thank you, thank you, Carrie, you're the best. And then the other one that I wanted to shout out Carrie for is the P E minutes and the board as well. I know that, and, and Marcus too, that that work was was difficult, and we are in compliance and proud of it. Um, and then the other one that I wanted to shout out Carrie for was the P minutes and the board as well. I know that, and, and Marcus too, that that work was, was difficult and we are in compliance and proud of it. Um, and then the high school has been really planful. Shout out to Jake and the counselors at the high school for, um, personal finance and careers. I know talking with. Colleagues across the state, people are still kind of scrambling about how are we going to do this or asking for extensions? And high schools had that locked in and we're excited about that. Um, and then a shout out to Joel for his. Always diligent work with our improvement plans and keeping our district focused and, and in a direction that, um, keeps us in compliance with many of these roles and, um. Is, is so planful about those improvement plans. So I appreciate Joel on that front. Um, and then finally, the board, thank you because you've worked so hard in updating our policies that it was really nice. To roll through this list and be able to say, oh, this is in policy, blah, 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 policy, blah. Like it, it was very seamless. So thank you because I know the lift was heavy last year. For policy work. And so I, I greatly, greatly appreciate that in terms of my, uh, division twenty-two compliance report. Um. So those are just the few that I, I'm proud that we're in compliance on. The one rule that I have to share with you that we are out of compliance, which I believe you are all aware of this is the Menstrual Dignity Act. Um, and that's what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Yeah.
Amazing. And it's a group effort.
Absolutely. It is a group effort. We've got a great team and I'm grateful for everyone on it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Six point three, OSA's assessment report. Back to you, sir.
Back to talk about OSES. Um, so, uh, just to set some context, uh, I'll kind of go over, overview in timeline. I know. Uh, some of you might not be as familiar with what the OSES is or even around what it is. He takes it. Uh, then we'll look at our data. So this is all data. We typically take the OSES in May in English, language arts, math and science. So this is reporting data for the last day that was publicly released. Uh, in, uh, late September. So an overview, so you'll hear words like summative. So summative means this is the test you take at the end of the year. It's not in the middle. Uh, we, we're not able to make any instructional changes. Uh, when you take it in, it's kind of like how you did. It's, uh, one comparison. People call it the autopsy. The learning's already been done. You take it at the end of the year to, to see how you did. Um, you take it in English, language arts, uh, and math, and that's grades three, eight and eleven. And then for science, they take it in grades five, eight and eleven. Going to nerd out on assessment real quick, just to give you guys a little background information. So in the early two thousands, it all started with this thing called Oaks and that was, uh, tied to no child left behind. Did you maybe heard of it? It was, uh, part of the Bush administration. Then in two thousand and ten, uh, you probably heard about the Common Core. So the ODE, uh, decided to adopt the Common Core state standards. This was tied to the Obama administration with, uh, uh, doing something called Race to the Top where they would award these mega grants. Um, for district showing innovation around, around these items. So two thousand and ten, we switched to Common Core. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen. Cause what happened was when we changed to the Common Core, we're teaching the Common Core, the Oaks was to the old state standard. So we kind of were out of whack for a little while. So in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, two testing companies came around, uh, SBACK, which is the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. That's what Oregon chose. And then there was the PARK, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career. And another kind of twenty states chose that. So you have the SBACK and the PARK. Uh, in two thousand and fifteen, SBACK officially replaced the Oaks test and changed the proficiency level. So if you look at a longitudinal, uh. Uh, view of our data, we were typically in the seventies and eighties, the SBACK came and Stacy Smith got up here and said, hey, we just dropped forty percent. Well, the measure had, the measure had changed and that was back in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen slash nineteen, the SBACK became the OSES. They just, Oregon wanted to rebrand it, uh, to get away from kind of a federal connotation of the SBACK. OSES stands for, um, Oregon Student Assessment System. And we assess it, uh, we give this every spring. So just wanted to give you some context of what this all is. Good question.
Has anybody looked at the PARK versus the SBACK and is our states that took part performing better than this?
You know what's happening is every state, one of the big selling points of both the PARK and SBACK was, hey, you can all compare our data to one another. This will finally see who's doing great and how we can improve. But then all great states do, we put our own little twist on it to make it so we couldn't really compare. Um, so I actually, it's funny, as I said, because I looked today. And the number of states still doing the PARK is just, it's a, it's a steady decline. The number of states still doing SBACK is a steady decline. So. Uh, the grand ambitions of the PARK and SBACK have slowly dissolved, uh, away.
So there's no good reason to hang on to the SBACK.
No, uh, the, you're, you're not able to compare. Um, you know, when this all started back in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and thirteen. Uh, Massachusetts, which was actually the leader in education, said, we don't want any of this. We're just going to do our own thing. They're still didn't do it better than most. So. All right. So, uh, and like I said, so the SBACK and OSES is at the end of the year. So in the fall, winter and spring, we give what's called a formative. So SBACK, OSES is summative. Formative means you're doing check-ins along the way and we use I-Ready for that. And we'll report that to the board at the end of each trimester. So. All right. And this is in your packet. If you need to get closer, look, I know the numbers are probably a, a little smaller. So what we did was we pull. Uh, we're going to start with English, English, language arts, and we chose eight grade levels. So third grade, fifth grade and eighth grade. And that first graph on the left shows you how our third graders have done each of the last four years. So third grade in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So you can see we've been a little turbulent. Um, I was thinking recently of a, a study that talked about, if you think about where the district's been in the last couple of years, how that can impact student data. So I. Or maybe seen a little bit of that where we're seeing some, uh, this blue line is how Kirk County third graders are doing. And this yellow line is how the state's doing. So the state's gone up maybe just a point. Um, the, the district's gone about three percent, but it's been kind of up and, up and down. You can see. Um, fifth grade, uh, a little bit better data. So you can see we're at fifty-one percent back in twenty twenty-one. Uh, last year we finished at fifty-seven percent for our fifth grader. So we're seeing some good growth there. It's about, uh, what, nine percent, uh, above the state average there. And then eighth grade, similarly, we're seeing actually some really good, um, seventeen percent above the state average. So that's, that's something we can be really proud of. So that's our English Language Arts. And then if you know me, you've been around a lot. I love a good comparison. So, um, this is looking at the region. So how would we do compared to Sisters or Coher? So if you look, uh, Ben Lapine, this is all students, English Language Arts. So Ben Lapine, they took the top spot. They were fifty-three, then Sisters, but. Uh, you can see Kirk County, we finished just below Sisters. And also if you've been around for a long time. We were not always in the upper tier. Uh, I remember there were years where we were battling Colfer's and Majest, uh, um, not beyond the bottom there. So. While we're nowhere clear, close to where we want to be, we are seeing some, some progress and we are competing well against our regional neighbors. Um, this change column shows whether the scores went up or down for that district for that year compared to the previous year. So, um, we grew a couple of districts, a couple of districts up. So. Um, one thing we, we, I always want to emphasize is our staff are working so hard, uh, getting these students prepared. Training throughout the year, um, and they for everything. And so, um, although we're not quite where we want to be, we are, we do want to recognize the hard work of the staff and, and a lot of good progress that we. Um, let's shift over to math. Again, it's those, uh, three key grade levels, third, fifth and eighth. Um, again, you see a lot of variability at the third grade level. We're still, uh, looks like, uh, three point percent above the state average, but you're seeing, you're seeing some vulnerability, uh, or variability. Uh, at the, uh, fifth grade level, we're seeing six point three percent above the state average. And then, uh, eighth grade, we're seeing, uh, kind of trending down a little bit, but thirty-five point five percent above the state average. So. Um, some progress there. And again, um, it'll be one of my key points. I think math. Is an area that we need to focus on moving forward. We, we shifted a little bit to literacy, uh, the last two years. We really focused our professional development there. And we're seeing, I'll show you in a little bit, we're seeing math scores kind of trend downward. And I think we need to. Start investing a little heavier, investing some more time in training to that. So that'll be a, a big push. You'll see the pain. Um, again, we fall just below Bend and Sisters. It looks like the region went down in math. You'll see everyone, uh, you know, the highest was a point six growth by, by Majors. Um, so now we're, we're kind of right in the mix, the upper tier of, of the region, but still a lot of work to do there. And then science, science, we're seeing the most variability. Uh, and again, science just does a fifth grade, eighth grade and eleventh grade. Um, a question you should be thinking is, well, where's our eleventh grade data? We're again around, uh, Mr. Huffman, the high school team worked really hard to get participation rates up. But it still was around, say like forty, fifty percent. And our high schoolers are focusing more on tests that are more meaningful to them, the AP tests, the SAT, the ACT. So it's hard to get them to buy into these. These assessments. Um, so, uh, big dip in the last two years around science at the fifth grade level, but starting to, to trend in a better direction. And eighth grade, we saw a little dip. Both are above the state average, but this is one where we really need to spend a little more time on. I think alignment to the assessment and the standards is a, is a big piece of that. All right. Now I'm really going to nerd out some charts for you guys. So, um, this one's not in the packet. Uh, we were able to pull this. So. This is our English Language Arts cohort over time and I'll email this to you guys, uh, tonight. So you can look at it closer. So. This shows groups of students. So all our seventh graders, how'd they do? The sixth graders, fifth graders, fourth graders. So it shows are more students. Getting better or getting worse passing the test. So for example, this yellow line, that's our current seventh graders. So I'm saying that because I know Eric and Kelsey have heard and they do have current seventh graders. So. Here you can see how that group of kids did last spring. They're, uh, it's like about forty-four percent. This is how they did as fifth graders. This is how they did as fourth graders and third graders. So ideally we want to see those lines trending up. We're seeing, if you look at the last two years, you're seeing just a little bit. It's, it's hard to draw any firm conclusions. And I think that speaks to. Don Supplemilk, right? We can kind of throw some stuff at the wall. So I, I think having a, a, a longer range table plan, uh, will help with that instability. And my most cautionary measure, uh, from, from tonight is our math, like I mentioned. So this shows over time how those cohorts are, are doing. And you can see. In the last two years, a trend down and that correlates pretty well with a shifting our focus over to literacy. So I think we need to find whatever that balance is. So it's not like. Oh, you're focused fully on, on, uh, on literacy or you're focused full on math. We really need to balance those two and make sure that we're, we're doing well.
Um, Senator Bob, the, the orange line and the purple line where you don't have a complete data set, is that because we didn't have testing for?
Well, good, good question. So that's our fifth grader. So our current fifth graders. So they only have two years of data. Starting with the third grade. Cause you won't take it in third. So we have their third grade and their fourth grade. Good question. And you'll see the sixth graders only have three years of data.
So. For a lot of these charts, just at a macro level, it seems like. For, and it's, it's different points for different subjects, but it seems like we can hit these plateaus and go down and hit this plateau like. I know this is a tough question. It's, it's such a complex thing, but. What like, what is it going to take to kind of get over that plateau? Because it, if, if from an outsider, a non-educational person, it seems like there's probably this group of people. Kids that are like in the middle and with more investment they go up, or less they go down. But there's probably this other group that. Maybe needs some kind of, yeah, that to get over that.
Yeah. I, I think a lot of it is alignment to the rigors of reassessment, right? So if we ask, uh, students, you know, all year long. Hey, what color was Joey's vest? And it's blue, you know, based on reading. But then when they get to this, they say, why did Joey feel angry at his sister? Where it's a deeper level of analysis. Think we need to do a better job aligning our question set throughout the year for that. So I think that's a big piece. Um. That would be my main focus is, is alignment to the standards and the question levels. I also think there's an element of. A lot of times our focus is on the students at the lowest level. So we have like, for example, Title One reading intervention where we're taking those students that are really struggling reading and that's where we invest most of our interventions. Where the board set in July, a go around, well, what about those students that are in the yellow area then? Um, how do we invest heavily in the yellows to get to greens while also investing in the reds to get to the yellows? Right now, the vast majority of our, our interventions are for those red students. Where I think targeting more investment around yellow students would, would help, uh, boost that a little higher.
Cause it'd be interesting too, and we need, we need to ramp up to look at this, but it's like. Especially for like our ninth graders. It's like, is, is it the same students? On either side of the line for the last, you know, X amount of years and what do those students have in common or what's kind of their, our young profile? And do we see that against these other colfers? Cause at least we could like pinpoint a little bit better, like what that.
Yeah.
And maybe it is probably is the yellow, but it's like.
And, uh, one of the board's goals was to create, uh, we have a pretty. Pretty comprehensive tracking system at my school level. There's not, uh, it's, it's a different system at that elementary level. So we're kind of looking at how, how can we align different pieces of that? Uh. But this is one that we're finally focusing now that we've. Mended the, built the bridges with our community, shifting all that, not all of it, but, but a more proportionate level to like, okay, what are we doing for attendance and how do we get these yellow students to green? I, I think that's a good direction to go in.
Yeah. And I think it's just helpful too, because it's like. I mean, rightfully so, like everybody in this room would probably have a different perspective on this. And it's just, I think the more we can ground ourselves in data, like the better it, we can ground ourselves in reality. And like.
Ground yourself in data. That is, I love everything about that.
I guess it can be different classes too. But, um. Then, then I think we can orient ourselves to the reality of like what's actually going on versus the perception.
Yeah. Um, hey, a couple more, um, and these are part of your, in your packet. So, uh, gender breakdown was something that the board was really interested in. So this is all students, English Language Arts, uh, over time. So our girls seem to be performing really well, uh, or at least relatively well compared to the state average. Uh, this is English and arts. Our boys are right, just slightly above the state average. So that was an interesting takeaway. And then you'll see math is a little bit opposite that. Um, so you can see our boys are. Higher than our girls in that. And again, this is combining a ton.
One third of our volume.
Yes. Yeah. So, uh. So some, some just interesting data. Um, and then science, we're kind of all in the mix, uh, coming together. So. I'll email these out. So you guys can look a little bit closer. I wanted to highlight a couple of bright spots and I never try to call out individual schools. But I saw, I, I've never seen a report card like this. This is Crooked River where you can see a ten percent growth in English Language Arts. And, and that's growth in, in students passing that bar. So that's in their achievement levels. An eleven percent grows, growth in math and eleven percent in science. And I've done this, I think fourteen years and I've never seen that consistent, uh, level of achievement. So I think Crooked River is a big, big round of applause. It might be correlated.
Dance Party Fridays. Yeah.
So we still have a lot of growth, just some bright spots. We continue to, to rise above the state average, which is something I do really want to acknowledge our staff doing. Uh. Like I said, Crooked River, uh, all elementary saw growth in their English Language Arts, which was a real win. Um, the middle school math is more than five percent higher than the state average. So I think that's a huge celebration. Um, our eighth grade, like I said earlier, was about seventeen percent above the state average in English Language Arts, which is a, which is a huge accomplishment. So credit to Marcus and his team. Um, I, I didn't show the data, but Jake did do an awesome job. Thanks, Jake. This was, this was actually, I want to say a challenge from the board. There's some, the guys need to get more, more students taking this test and. And I don't know how we did it, but, but Jake, Jake raised those numbers, uh, substantially. So, uh, and then. And then, uh, I, I also want to just acknowledge our staff and the, the performance that we saw still being above the state average. Despite the, the instability in the district the last two years, this time I think we think we grow of. Finally, challenge is the next step. Um, overall achievement, we're better than the state average, but it's still below our expectations. We have to continue to push on that. Um. We don't have, even though the Herculean effort by the high school to get their participation rate up to fifty percent, we still, unless you're looking at like eighty to ninety percent, it, it's hard to really trust the data. Um. Our next step, uh, we are pushing, uh, more nonfiction texts at the elementary level. The elementary assessment and middle school assessment is like seventy percent nonfiction text. And our curriculum is, is, I mean, probably the inverse of that, probably seventy percent literary and thirty percent nonfiction. So we're increasing amount of nonfiction texts that students are reading. Uh, Amber gets a lot of credit for that. Um, we're implementing the strategic literacy plan, which kind of re-does our intervention system and data dives. Uh, I'm working with Kimberly to say, what worked so well last year and replicate that at the other elementary. Uh, I'm working with Kimberly to say, what worked so well last year and replicate that at the other elementary schools, some positive practices like. Um, reading volunteer, she's got the most, uh, vibrant reading volunteer program where. In fact, that's an army of grandma show up and sit in their, their commons and read with students, uh, it's, it's so cool. And then, um, systems to have kids consistently read at home to an adult is another really positive practice that any family can do, so really pushing on that. Um, standardizing fam, uh, famine partnerships, so, uh, like I know, uh, we have to sign some every night saying, we'll give.
Red.
To get my read at home, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of effort, so, uh, sign to confirm that, and then. Also, another piece that could hear more of is, like I mentioned, at the high school level, where previously you're. These students don't necessarily see value in this test, because they're doing AP tests, they're doing the SAT, the ACT. But we still really need to get a better sense of how our high schools are doing, so one of the things that we piloted and are gonna implement this year is the ASVAB test. So this is a test that exists outside the state of Oregon, it's been around for thirty years, and it will give us, um, a good view of our high schools are performing. As well as my favorite aspect about it is, it not only tests, you know, reading, writing, science, but it also tests, uh, mechanical ability and mechanical knowledge, so. Got a ton of students who might struggle in math class, class that are awesome when getting their hands on an engine and taking things apart and putting it together. So it'll give us a, kind of a, a perspective on those students, which I think is important, so.
The ASVAB is the traditional military readiness test, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I think White D Eisenhower, uh, put it in place, so, uh, we're looking forward to giving those results. We've never done it for a whole, we're gonna do it for all our sophomores this year, and then next year we'll do it with all sophomores and all juniors, so then we'll be able to see growth and. Moving forward in that, and we also can tie into the pathways conversation, so.
We, we didn't do it, it was fifty years ago, but we didn't, we didn't.
Just a day together. Nineteen eighty, eighty years. Uh, any other questions on our assessments?
It, go back to your elementary slide there, where, where you said you were pushing the. Uh, nonfiction in elementary, isn't there data that says that, well, that's the right thing to do for test element? That is a good way to reduce student engagement, that your highest engagement is in the elementaries is when kids are reading what they like to read. Well, and interest them, you see, there's some pretty good data, I, I would definitely think so, it all comes down, I think.
The nonfiction text is what really can open us up to that, where if a student that's interested in soccer is able to read an article on soccer, and, um. Amber was able to find, uh, a research called Magnetic Reading, that is high engagement articles, uh. I know my, my fifth grader James came home talking about acid, yeah, not the drug, but. Acid of, he read this science article that he was just totally new to, so I, I, I think there's a ton of research that would back up. Getting students, um, how engagement in nonfiction articles is a great way to increase their, their abilities, and then. When we think of adult readers, which is what we wanna prepare students for. Most of what we read is, is nonfiction, um, so it, it's something that I think we, we want to prepare, prepare students for. Good question.
Right, still you.
Still going.
Still going, six point four.
I'm actually really excited for this topic. Uh, so. I wanted my first slide to be very clear, uh, this is the early phases of a positive, it was elaborate discussion. Between Palute Community Charter and, and CCSD, um, so. About, I'd say, three to, three to six months ago, uh, Meredith reached out, and Meredith joins a lot of our, she's on a lot of our email groups, uh, we have a really. Uh, tight collaboration between Palute and Community, and, uh, I'll mute, so, or Kirk County Schools, so, we stay involved, meet regularly. And, uh, we started talking, well, what would it look like if, how, how would Palute, would, would the district be able to support? How you give more opportunity for students than they currently are, so. We started just kind of talking and exploring and just kind of chewing on it a little bit, um, and I wanted to, to give an overview to the board as. As I was here when Palute separated in, in, uh, twenty ten, so there, there might be some, some gaps, so I wanted to provide just a quick overview. So prior to two thousand ten, Palute was a regular Kirk County Schools district school, just like Kirkover, just like Palute. Uh, and then in two thousand ten is when the budget cuts really hit, uh, Primeville especially hard. Um, CCSD was considering closing down Palute, imagine giant board member, board meetings and, and students yelling at, uh, Mister Cooper. Um, from there, uh, Palute families, uh, organized and created a charter school that the district agreed to, to, uh, sponsor. So that means they separated from the district, uh, and they began operating as a charter school in the building that the district still owns. Um, which we do to this day. So, uh, initially it was a three-year, uh, charter contract and building lease, uh, it went well, uh, in two thousand twelve. I believe we started providing some transportation services, so we stayed connected, um. That first charter, three-year charter renewal came up, and we decided to renew, things had, had gone relatively well, um. We did us, we're on a, we did a second renewal for a five-year term, and two thousand eighteen, we began incorporating some more technology support. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, we also began providing all transportation services, uh, we renewed to a third contract, uh. Uh, most recently, and we're still in that third contract, um, we began providing food services in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-five, we started talking about, okay, we're already doing food service, transportation, technology, policies. What would it look like, would it be helpful, um, if, if the district and Ellen started talking about potentially, um, re-engaging? So, uh, one other aspect, in spring of twenty twenty-six, so this upcoming spring, um, that charter expired. So we would consider whether to renew that again, and we thought that was actually a good time to then bring this, uh, to both the Palute Board and Kirk County Schools. Say, hey, is, do we just wanna renew the charter, or is this something where we wanna begin exploring and talking about potentially, um, bringing Palute back under the umbrella of the school this year?
Before you go to that, cause that's good, but I wanna correct your history.
Yeah, a little bit.
You were here, in two thousand ten.
Yeah.
The district, the board, never got around to taking action on that re- recommendation to close Palute.
Yeah.
The superintendent, the same one that said we should get rid of trash can liners and tell teachers to dump their own trash. Said we should consider closing Palute, that was enough to get the community in uproar and race for the exits. Uh, before we even got a chance to take that up.
Yeah.
So, little new one.
Well, I'm glad you said that, and that's where you put, cause I didn't actually know that, that we want to do it, and, and I said, oh, we, we never actually. Close, um, so, a, a little fun fact for those new to the board, um. So what I need to, um, I need to gauge the board's interests, uh, in formally exploring the possibility of, uh. How many returning to Kirk County School different, as a district-operated school, I think, I've done about as much. Informally that I, I feel comfortable with, where now I want some direction from the board of. No, what are you talking about, Joel? Uh, let's keep status quo, or, hey, why don't you explore more, so, um, two options, if interested. Um, I'd say we would begin official conversations with Palute Community Charter leadership and gather more information. Uh, relating to financial implications, staffing, facilities, governance, academic programming, and aligning with the district goals and priorities. If you're interested, if you're not interested, uh, we would just continue down the status quo with an annual renewal coming up in spring. Last slide, uh, why would we do this? Why do Palute, you know, start off with us, why would we talk to, um, Palute? Uh, we believe there's an opportunity to, uh, enhance the resources and support for Palute Community Charter families and their staff. Uh, we're already effectively aligned to, uh, facilities, food service, transportation, sped services. Uh, a lot of people aren't, so they, they, uh, have to have their own policies, so they typically take our policies. Sweet Meredith, uh, just to put us down and make sure they make sense, so they've adopted the majority of our policies and procedures. There's also a lot of challenges that I think we can support Palute with, um, they have essentially. The same amount of reporting to the OED that we do, and they do not have, uh, a, a superintendent, uh, the, the. Director of HR, a CFO, um, they have to either contract that out to the ESD, or Meredith just has to wear thirteen different hats. Um. Yes, she doesn't have any really departments su- supports like, like we do, uh, uh. And then just the operational demands of essentially, she's a district office. And a, and a school, all, all in one, and, and I think that can be really challenging. Um, as well as, uh, we need to start thinking of that facility, that, that's a big part of this, is that is a district ownability. Uh, the potential long-range facilities planning, it, it makes sense for that to be one of our schools, as we look at potentially making a big investment in, in that building. Or a future building, um, and then finally, this is just my relentless optimism is, I think there's a lot of power in unifying Kirk County Schools. Under one umbrella, uh, again, so, um, a lot of us weren't around for, uh, in two thousand ten, at least in these seats, but. Um, I, I think it will be definitely, I think a win for getting Kirk County Schools all, all under one umbrella again. From here, up to the board, um, board discussions, questions, um. Still a lot of unknowns, the, what, what I would hope if the board is interested, uh, and I would get to work. And look at all the considerations and bring that back to the board in November, as a, hey, here are all things to, um, that we wanna look deeper at. But at this point, I didn't wanna move any further without the board, uh, being in the loop and, and hearing from you guys.
What you said, so, certainly would be so good for Palute.
You know, um, I was gonna bring Meredith up here, Meredith, would you be able to speak to that?
Thank you all for coming here and retaining this conversation, um. Kevin, we're a little bit early to answer that question fully, um, my board is very much in an informational gathering stage right now. And Joel has been wonderful to help me through that process, and they're very open to what this looks like. Um, moving forward, so we have a meeting this coming Thursday that's dedicated most of the time to this grander conversation. And what does that look like, um, for PBCCS, the grander Kirk County community? Um, I can tell you that the longstanding community members that I have on staff. Or that are still closely related to the inner workings of the school have said, it is time. And does every voter feel that way? I can't, I can't answer that question, um, but. First guy's comment, when the charter was created, back during those very tumultuous times. None of those families currently have children there anymore, I have a completely different group of family members and, um. And the parents that I, I'm wanting to make sure everyone understands, this is a community decision. Every stakeholder's voice counts, and the parents that I have been able to have really good conversations with, they are very excited. They, they're like, oh, what kind of opportunities with this spring for our students? Who are playing soccer at these fields with all of these other students every Saturday, who are, um, having older siblings. In the middle school and the high school. They're very excited about the opportunity to feel like an integrated Kirk County school.
Well, you said information, I, I think that's where you're all comfortable, at least, you know, from my scene, uh. Gathering more information about really what that would look like, and then bringing that back to both, both floors and.
I, I think Mister Superintendent, you should pursue this under three conditions. First one would be that, if always that Palute should be welcome back in our school districts, when Palute's ready to come back. But that's all only their decision, from that, we had a board member a few years ago, which is took it personally that they had never allowed. Kept trying to force the issue, that we don't need to force the issue, Palute's ready, Palute's welcome. Secondly, I think we need to be sure that we are operating in unified district. So no special deals around, we're gonna operate eight schools this way and one school that way. Except to the degree that we allow autonomy in all of our schools, because every school has a different climate, so it needs a work system. And lastly, no major incentives, cash incentives, to come back to the district, because our financial position is not such. That we could jump anybody in the head of the line, we have to put everybody in order of emergent need. I'll be well, but if we can get there on those three, I'm better with it.
Is that a motion? Are you making a motion?
Well, that emotion, if you want me to. Yeah, I, I like to start with that, cause I think that's how we can, as we potentially set out into information gathering, we can gather it into those three buckets. Uh, you know, what does this look like as a unified district, where we do have schools now like Steen'sville that have a little magnetic kind of feel to them? Um, but what are those core things that, that all Kirk County school districts need, and how, how, how we align to that? Um, as well as, I, I think financial is, is a, a big one, um, and, and that would be something that I can really be, that I can become an expert in, dive into, so.
You guys have some reserves, I think.
You too.
You'll have to figure out what, how you. Prove it, those, those, that's such a legal thing, I haven't wanted. Let me try those emotions, I, I knew that we, um, directed Superintendent to continue negotiations. My notes gone, with CCA, with, uh, Palute Charter School for re-engagement. With three conditions, both consent of Palute Board and, um. Unified culture with the rest of the district. And no financial incentives, the joint.
Okay, we have a motion on table, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion to authorize. The interim superintendent to formal discussions with Palute.
And, and this.
And. And business manager to initiate formal discussions with Palute Community Charter School, um. With three conditions.
Sideboard.
Um, full. What was it?
Full.
Set as Palute Board.
Yes, unified culture, I couldn't even read my own name, and no financial incentives. And we have a second, we have further discussion?
I have a question for Eric, we looking, is Palute looking to retain the same status quo services provided? Are you looking at reduction of, uh, classes, like, I know you guys do middle school level, but that's been not about, we lived that before. If you're looking to keep that as well?
I would, absolutely, so I would say at this point, Eric, that the priorities from my board have been, continue with the K eight. Place-based education focus, and as Scott has mentioned, like. Every one of the Kirk County Schools has its own unique flair, and so to continue in that vein, absolutely, feels important. And for example, our students have PE every day, because that is the only specialist that we have on staff. And that's continued to be an important piece of our parent community's request, and so, um, we don't have music. And these other offerings that other elementary schools have, and so that's something that continues to be different, but very similarly aligned. We're following all the state requirements for educational minutes and all of those instructional pieces as well. So be continuing the K eight option, which. As we look at these enrollment numbers and the potentiality of Palute getting three thousand polished homes in the next ten years. Um, that's an important conversation that I think this board also needs to recognize, and I know ours does as well. So.
I think with Meredith, uh, our conversations are, you know, even stretching back to three or six months is. Okay, let's just take the next step, we can see in progress, and, and, and let's not get too far ahead of ourselves, and especially as this is a public meeting. No one even wanted to take this and, and act like this is happening next week.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're just taking the next step in front of us, and, and tonight's step was to hear from the board.
And as Joel said, with the, the charter coming, um, you know, expiring potentially at the spring of this next. Yeah, this next spring, this is a natural conversation, this conversation, as Scott remembers, has happened every time there's been a charter renewal. And so it's just a really good time for us to stop and, um, assess what are the needs of the community? And how can all of us work together to serve students best?
This wasn't a motion, but we'll gather information and present it in November or December, um.
I think it's gotta be in Palute's mind, over this, those, we love that these states go events in this year, certainly next year. And that falls much harder in smaller institutions, that is, on something as big as we do the best systemic, that's, and it may not be possible to run a charter. Within two years. So I think it's a proven compensation, yeah.
All right, we'll come back to the board in November or December. We have to pass the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and something.
A sensible.
It's okay, it's all right, all right, so discussion, we have any more discussion? Okay, let's vote, Eric.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kelsey, it's, um, Kevin. And yes, as well.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Dr. Love, thank you.
Dr. Love, thank you for that. Okay, uh six point five is an addition from Mr..
So. I need you to think a little bit and learn a little bit about how. Superintendent searches work, because we've got some calendar issues that are about to drive us someplace. Quite frankly, we need to make a decision next month. If you're gonna search for a superintendent. It has to happen in the January to April timeframe. Because that's when superintendents who are in existing positions doing well, but decided they wanna advance their career somewhere else, go out looking. And they all get hired in that format period. If you hire outside of that. You're gonna get somebody who wasn't selected during the January through April period. Or somebody who's got circumstances that are causing them to disrupt their leadership right in the middle of their tenure, and that's probably not a candidate you're gonna want. So that's a big issue for getting ready with that. To get your superintendent. There is no superintendent's journal, let's stick a one ad in the back of it. There is no Amazon, let's order a superintendent, have one next week. You've gotta go through this really prolonged process that involves hiring consult first and foremost. Nobody does this without a consultant. And then the consultant has to go through this whole community profiling thing. And then you've gotta get your candidates in and then you've gotta do your community interview and it literally takes. Six to eight months to get the process done. There is no other way to do it. Um the previous board tried really hard to find a way to search for it and they were not successful. Because there is no other way to do it. There's just a way it's done in education. So if we're gonna hire a superintendent. For the next, for you know, next school year or whatever, we're gonna have to lock that in before June and that means we need to start November. If we're gonna kick the can down the road, but do, then we're talking about doing that next January through June. Which leaves our superintendent, if we do that, in a very difficult position of not knowing whether he has a job or not. Because he'd like to be a candidate under that. And whether he's headed to a job and and he doesn't, and then he almost has to start throwing his resume out in case he's not the one we select. So if we're gonna go down that search, we almost have to start the problem, vote next month to do that. We do not vote on these things in plain because that causes drama. So but next month, we should probably pick whether we want to do it or not and then start selecting a consultant in December. There is another path for us that I want you to think about between now and November. We could dispense with a search. And go straight to the appointment of our interim superintendent as our superintendent. The competitive search is not required. So a competitive search is not required. That's an option we should maybe wanna consider. Um there seems to be a lot of support for our current superintendent, but. If we're gonna do that in his own interest, it's probably best if we have some sort of identified process. To go out and do listening sessions with people, get staff feedback, surveys, that reach some sort of consensus that we don't need. To go out, even if we're gonna do that, we still have to allow time to go to a search. If that process works out differently than we intended, so we still have to make the decision next month so we can start a process. That's eventually moving us for the appointment of Dr. Bob in July, if that's what we wanted to do. Not saying that is what we want to do. Either way, false signs point to a decision needs to get made next month. About which process we wanna go on. Or we're gonna run out of time and we're not gonna be in the right window to hire. I don't think we've thought through that full process, so I'd like to ask everybody's consent to have staff bring back. Working with the chair proposal for us to think about and consider a process. To make this rather big deliberation for the future of our district next month. Because we we're running out of time. I think we all thought we had a longer run than anyone else. Because of that.
Yeah, it really stuck up on us. So Scott, then the other question is. We've filled that spot and then do we have. Let's say hypothetically, sue some kind of appropriate process. Dr. Hop is up in that spot. Do we, are we hiring an assistant superintendent?
We don't have one budgeted right now, but you start playing.
And well, not saying that you should, I just.
Yeah. Right now, we didn't budget one in the last. So remember we were, but the reason we didn't budget it was because we had to do, we're trying to save that money to cover the cost of this. Severance packaging, which we have done. So no action needed, just.
Right.
Information to sort of buttons.
Okay, information, not only lots of information, but they're short and French.
Calendar moves on.
Yes.
They mean like a decision tree.
Okay. Is that all of them, six point five what you had? Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. Um okay, seven point oh upcoming dates. Uh school board policy and committee meeting is October twentieth by thirty P M at the district office. Uh no school for grades K through conferences October twenty-third, uh no school for grades K through twelve conferences October twenty-fourth. School board work session is October twenty-seventh by thirty P M at the district office. No school staff development day October thirty-first. OSBA annual convention is November sixth through the eighth. Uh school board meeting November tenth, six thirty P M at the district office and no school veterans day November eleventh. Uh moving on to public comments, if you wish to make a public comment, please complete a comment card prior to the start of public comments. You're feeling online, please indicate that you'd like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name and any group you are representing. Keep your comments to no more than four minutes. Time with thirty seconds remaining and another bell will chime when the four minutes have ended. A group of visitors with a common purpose should designate a spokesperson for the group. If you wish to request it, the board consider an agenda item, please contact the superintendent at least one week prior to the next uh board meeting. For policy B D D H, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. If you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent or the board chair. At this time, Miss Sammy, do we have any comment cards? We do not. Uh Eric, do we have anybody online? Okay, so right now we have no public comments and I'm going to the journalist meeting at six oh two. Thank you.